Okay, our first public hearing tonight is an application for conditional use variance for Brian Johnson's request for a conditional use variance for property located at Zero North Highway 341 at South Burt Mill Road, Flintstone, Georgia, tax amount zero dash zero six nine dash four nine. This has gone before the planning commission as well, so this is the second public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition on this tonight? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this?
I would.
Yes, sir, if you'd come to the podium and state your name, please.
My name is Brian Johnson. I'm the one applying for the conditional use permit off of West Smith Road over there, South Burt Mill. I brought some photos for you guys who have not seen it yet, who I'm doing. Here is the actual photos of the tent that I have in place. I did take it down yesterday, just in case I didn't want to cause any further issues. What you're looking at there, these are Belarus tents. I moved back from Washington DC three years ago and worked in a local church, but I don't make DC money anymore, so me and the wife got together and said, "Let's start a glamping company." We love to camp. We camp all over the country. I'm taking my son to Africa this year. We're going to camp two weeks down there. But a lot of people just don't know about camping, so we got together with this idea of Sojourne, where adventure meets comfort. The concept that we want to get children off of screens and back into camping, understanding that lifestyle. Most of my friends don't know how to camp. They don't know the first thing about it, nor do they have the equipment to do it. So my idea is kind of a, an in-between. So I'm looking at a glamping concept where you still have your therapeutic mattress, you still have your Pure Egg, you still have your electricity, but yet you're not connected to Wi-Fi. You're out there, you're camping, you're using a campfire, you're fishing at the pond. With that, the idea would be is to exclusively run it through an Airbnb. One of the things I would like to avoid, because it will be my children learning business, my six kids will be involved in this continuously. I want them to learn how to manage business, manage people, but the idea would be is I want the high-end renter. The average rental price for these units across the United States right now is $130 to $230 a night in the tents. I'm going to start at $130 a night during my peak season and $99 a night during the less desirable season, for instance, the last three months of rain. The idea with Airbnb is it's completely referral-based. Nobody can steal my unit without me first seeing their reviews from other Airbnb sources. So I am getting to review the person that is trying to rent my property and then return or getting to read the reviews on my, on my glamping unit. So it's kind of a self-governing concept. The other object is to keep it a little bit more on the higher-end scale, so they don't have the issues that comes with a picture tent concept and packing them in there. In my conditional use request, I requested that I was asking for 12 spots, 10 to 12 units. Concept being if somebody's going to pay $130 a night, they don't want to be parked right next to Joe five feet away. I want each unit to have about an acre of property. They feel that they're, they kind of own the space that they can live in. The original concept with Sojourne was if you look in those back photos, we're shipping containers. Right now, Walker County has a moratorium on that concept. The reason being in the glamping community world, because we do deal with a lot more moisture issues, you do have to look at constantly re-watering and maintaining the space. You don't get good reviews if you're 10 weeks. So again, I want something that is, that is high-end. I also bought the rights to ChattanoogaGlamping.com. End user being, I don't want Chattanoogaans in Walker County. I could have moved into Chattanooga. I work in Chattanooga. I don't want to move in Chattanooga. I was raised here. My dad's a triple PH doctorate, born right here, went to Gordon Lee. I came back home. I loved being raised here. My dad raised me on a farm. I want my kids raised that same way, right here. So really just trying to come up with an unconventional idea to supplement some income.
Thank you. Anyone else here do not like to speak for or against this? Okay, we're going to want to hear from our planning and zoning chairman. This had been taken up already once with planning and zoning, so Philip Cantrell, if you tell us the thoughts from planning and zoning.
Okay, Mr. Johnson did come to the meeting and present to us basically the same thing he has told the commission here tonight. The people on the board thinks this is a wonderful idea. No one is against this idea. They think it'd be great for Walker County. The problem we have is with the zoning. According to our codes that we have in the county, this type of, of, has to be held in general agriculture area, which is larger areas and away from everything. So at this meeting, we had the folks that live over there, probably 50 of them, come to the meeting. I didn't count them, but we just had a room full of people. We just had to keep bringing in chairs. And they actually had their own agenda, you know, that they brought with all of the reasons for not allowing it, you know? And so, you know, when we make a decision at zoning, we try to, we have to be able to present to the people why we did that, you know? If we approve something, you know, we've got to say, "Look, we're doing this because, you know, of the, of the reason why." And then everybody is usually pretty well, you know, happy with the situation. But under this situation, we couldn't give these folks an answer why we would give him a variance in a residential R2-zoned area, even though we thought it was a great idea. So the board voted to turn it down unanimously, even, even though we, you know, we did feel like it was a great idea. And so, you know, now, now it's in your guys' hands, you know?
Mr. Commissioner, may I, may I speak? I'd want to draw to your attention, I know you've been out of town the past couple of days, but we have earlier today, myself, Mr. Wardlaw, our public relations director, been working with the Chamber of Commerce representative on some ordinance changes that will capture hotel motel revenue. And part of the consideration of that is how we might capture that from short-term rental facilities around the county, those that are currently in existence that are not in compliance with the zoning regulations, but that do exist. We anticipate that we're going to have some movement on either the zoning regulations regarding short-term rentals, or have to go about it from a different approach, probably within the next month or so. So I would suggest to you, to Mr. Johnson and to Mr. Cantrell, it might be a situation where this ought to be tabled, because this question may be made moot by some of the changes that are going to occur over the next few months. But that's just something for your consideration.
Yeah, we did put a team together that's looking at all of our planning and zoning and different things that we're doing in the county, so I agree as well as, I mean, it sounds like a great idea, a great concept, but it may not be the right fit at the right moment based off of where we are with zoning. So based off that recommendation, I think at this time, we just need to table this and see how things develop and how things change and what the other recommendations are that come back to this, to this body. So at this time, well, let me, I'll have to handle this in another session, actually, but I think it's going to be probably best to table it. But that still gives, there's, you know, still some things that may change there.
So for clarification, it's just being tabled at the moment? There's no?
Right.
And Mr. Johnson, you and I spoke on the phone today. I enjoyed that very much. I'll be with you. I want us to continue that dialogue as we explore together how to benefit this county. I think you have a great idea, and you heard Mr. Cantrell, if we can't, we can't approve things at the moment just because it's a good idea, you know? It has to be in compliance. So in this case, it may be more of a case of us catching up to current realities, but it's no kind of negative toward your idea in any sense whatsoever. I think it's an exciting idea. So you and I will continue to talk as this evolves.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming here tonight.
Okay, that ends our first public hearing. We have our second public hearing tonight, where we have a couple of ordinance changes. The first one is ordinance number zero one dash nineteen, amend the language in chapter thirty-four regarding land development to include the adjacent public nuisance ordinance of 2004. It would also add chapters twelve to the county code of ordinance regarding building and building construction. So Matt, can you give us an overview of these changes?
I would be glad to. Following the constitution of the advanced team, the Vision 2030 advanced team, one of the issues that that team undertook was to take a look at land use regulations in our current ordinances and also consider some, some changes that could be made that would put more tools in our, our pocket, or tools in our toolbox, to deal with some of the blighted and abandoned and fire-destroyed homes in the county. The consideration of adding chapter twelve is a result of that and also of the community forums that we've recently concluded, wherein we've heard from residents in Walker, in particularly the northern end of Walker County, Rossville and Chickamauga, especially concerning a lot of these old burned-out and abandoned structures. There are public health and safety concerns that our current ordinances cannot address because they don't provide any kind of self-help mechanism that the county can utilize to try to ameliorate the conditions of these properties. So that is where this new clean and lean, as it's called, ordinance came, came from. The change to the current ordinance, the public nuisance ordinance of 2004, is a direct result of some of the feedback that we heard from these community forums regarding the number of junk vehicles present on, on property and also the number of garbage bags that people are allowed to keep out on their property, on the public streets, and in view of people who might be driving by. These ordinance changes are still a work in progress, and as we have these public hearings, there's a potential where we may require more public hearings as the team continues to review specifically the public nuisance ordinance of 2004, because there are some additional provisions that the team is considering that may result in changes to the provisions regarding garbage bags specifically. The consideration that the, the team is currently undertaking is whether you, or whether we should require that any garbage bags be placed in canisters. And if that's the case, if we go with the canister route, that may change the, the amount entirely that we currently have under the ordinance and the changes that we have here tonight. So that's the, that's where these revisions have come from.
So just so everyone will understand, this existing document, the changes are reflective in what's in color, what's been underlined, or what's been struck or aligned through. Correct?
That is correct.
And so that pretty well starts on page four of the packet where it gets under the abandoned vehicles. And so currently, in our residential areas in particular, someone could have two junk or abandoned vehicles in that property, and they're in compliance. And so we've got situations where we're having a lot of complaints come in about this, because a lot of times these vehicles are not operable, they've been sitting for years, or sometimes sitting on blocks, many times they've got vegetation that have overtaken them, and it's not really made sense why you can have, you can't have three or four or five, but you can have two, or you can have one. And so this, again, is a lot of feedback that we're hearing from the public meetings and also from the vision team, that, that we need to make modifications to this. And so, and it also included adding, where it says any junk automobile, truck, or vehicle, and it was expanded into watercraft or other types of utility trailers, has been also added. And then on page five, you can see there's some additional changes to that. So at this time, if anyone would like to speak on this, we're not taking any action on this tonight. We have to have a minimum of two public hearings on any type of ordinance changes. So if anybody has anything supporting this or against this, we'd ask you just to come to the podium and speak your name for the record, and we'll give you up to five minutes to speak on this. Yes, sir, question to call?
This is in relation to junk automobiles and just junk in general. We have junk automobiles completely filled with junk. So you have a junk item with junk items all inside it. We have front porters filled with junk that you can have in front, just about this wide for someone to get into the residence. That's terrible. We're trying to encourage people to move into the valley, but when they drive in it, whenever you say, ask where you live, somebody asks you where you live, and you tell them, they say, "Oh, is that down there by that house that's got all that junk in the front porch?" And I reluctantly have to answer yes. But they started out with three junk cars, one truck and two junk automobiles. The truck had a, a tree growing up into where the motor was supposed to be, and I complained about that and everything. This has been going on, folks, for 20 years. And you can't sell your property, especially the one that's in the front of it. Nobody's going to buy that house. We're having to face this, and I've got pictures of it. Joe's got them. I don't know if he could, I was hoping we could put them on the screen somewhere, but maybe not. I would like for you to see what we're letting to live in our subdivision, what we're having to put up with. And so I just want them to stress the fact that you don't need any junk cars. Junk cars are the places for junk cars, not in a, in a residential subdivision. And there's other garbage and barrels out of there by the junk cars. I've got all the pictures of it, and I've complained, and according to the ordinances, evidently, they're in, or she is in compliance. But that's why I stress the fact that the codes need to be changed. And maybe, but maybe I've got copies of the code. I can, I can read into it and where that's a nuisance, but evidently somebody says, "What's a nuisance?" So you might not be a nuisance to other people. But I just, that's what I want to stress, that we've got some other issues in the valley that, where we have utility buildings out in the front yard, lot down 193. You look when you come into the valley that way and you see all these utility buildings out in the front yard and other kinds of buildings that shouldn't be there. And I'm just stressing, I was hoping some of the members of the 2030 group was going to be here tonight, so I could, they could, I could show them the pictures and make sure that they at least, at least try to bring the ordinances up to where our, our valley is clean, under this clean that y'all were talking about. I don't consider that clean.
Thank you very much.
Also too, just for clarification, starting at the bottom of page seven, it says chapter twelve, and so everything from page seven, correct, Matt, forward through page fourteen, is that correct, is all new?
That's correct.
Yeah, so everything from, bottom of, basically, might as well say from page eight through page fourteen is all new, that primarily deals with block structures, correct?
That's correct.
Anyone else want to speak on any of these ordinance changes? Yes, ma'am?
It's okay, I'll just stay here. My name is Vicky, and I live on the north end of Walker County. And everything that you say is, you know, I totally agree with him, but mainly, we are just here to show our support that changes are coming down the pipe, and that we plan to be involved in that, and just to stay on the same page with everybody else, that we keep moving forward. We're all working on that.
Same thing very much.
As a matter of fact, we have some appearance issues at our house that we're already in the process of housekeeping and cleaning up, not junk cars or bags.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Rufus Smalling. I think we've got some confusion, because David Brown and his crew, or one of, I don't know if the person still works for the crew or not, out in the agricultural area, they're saying that none of this applies, that there can be any kind of junk. Now, not, not bringing up cars, but I mean, just junk. Old agricultural equipment, old utility buildings, drums, old tires. Now, they've worked hard to try to get rid of the old tires, but we're still seeing a lot of old tires, and that's a mosquito problem. But there seems to be some confusion between what's, what's residential and what's agricultural. There's got to be a, if there's a distinction, it needs to be made in the, in the rules and regulations, because there seems to be some conflict.
There definitely has been some discussion as this was put onto the website. We have had some other people speak, you know, in these public meetings about maybe there needs to be a distinction between the residential zoning versus agriculture, maybe that's.
Yeah, because it's two different worlds.
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, it still doesn't, there's, I mean, I've owned and grown up on farms. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily, you don't necessarily have to junk it up to have a farm. Granted, you may have a lot of equipment, but normally you, you either put it in a shed or you keep it somewhere. You don't just throw it broken down everywhere.
Mr. Rufus, I do want to tell you that the 2030 team, this is absolutely on their radar. They're very aware.
Okay. Well, I just, I've just had some experience where there seems to be some confusion.
There is awareness. Thank you, sir.
Matt, do you have anything else to add about this chapter twelve, any additional overview?
No, sir.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Yes, sir?
You know, not everyone can afford a new vehicle or a vehicle two or three years old. My most youngest vehicle is a 2008. So if I've got a 2008 Nissan Quest that's been wrecked, and I buy it cheap, and I have it on my property to use as a parts car, then I think I ought to be able to do that. I've got a 98 truck, same thing. So the way I read this, I could have that on my property, and I'm not in a subdivision. I understand being in a subdivision, and I understand there's some things that needs to be taken care of, but, so if I have the, one of these vehicles on my property, it's wrecked, run in, it's totaled, whatever, but I'm going to use it as a parts car, do I have, can I have it on my, and there's no provision in here to have that unless maybe it's under a carport or garage. Is that correct?
Well, it's not a, at this point, I want to clarify this to everyone, we're in the process of figuring out what reflects the community's best interest from input, input from the community. So anything that you see now, this is a discussion phase to hear citizens just exactly like what you're doing, say, "I want this to be considered." So I think it's important to note that it's not a final product. It's in the making, so.
That's why I'm here.
Yes, sir.
To voice my opinion, my thoughts, my concerns. So there, again, my question is, you know, could you, would you, okay, would you consider, you know, if I want to have a parts car here to, you know, should I have it covered somehow? A tarp? Nothing at all? Enclosed? You know?
Yes, sir.
Something along those. And same, you know, farmers, you know, I know a lot of these farmers may have old tractors. Now granted, sitting out in the middle of their front yard, it's one thing, but if they got it behind their house off the side, out in the field, you know, if they may have old tractors, well, you know, they want to keep them. Same way with any other, you know, type, because it does say on here, it doesn't, it doesn't say, uh, under definition of abandoned vehicle, it doesn't, it says, "Or any other similar vehicle." So that will cover anything, anything with wheels, in my opinion. So, um, I guess, how, what's the process of, say something, you say, say the code enforcement says this is violation, what's the normal, what's the now, or going to be the normal process for his citation, fine, how does that process actually work?
Yeah, typically what is done is with, it's a code violation side, the code officer, first responsibility is to explain that violation and make sure the property owner understands or provide that documentation. And then they're going to write a, a warning citation and give that property owner 30 days to come into compliance. Sometimes when you have weather issues, other extended circumstances, maybe someone's been out of town, they had vacations planned, and other, we take all that into account. And then especially if it's around more, a lot of junk or garbage or stuff, the code enforcement would typically go back in 15 days, this is a follow-up, and just see if there's progress being made, see what the mindset of the property owner is, if there's any other questions, once they've had time to review the documentation and understand, you know, what their plan is. When you've had weather like we've had, and we've had a lot of rain, it's dark at six o'clock, it's hard sometimes through those winter months to get, get movement. So the code officer will have discretion to work and collaborate with that property owner, you know, if they're trying to make progress, if they need to give it an extended period of time, they have the full discretion to do that. But if someone is not willing to come into compliance, and they're basically just saying, "I'm not going to do this," then they have the ability to write them a citation fine. And so then it can escalate from there. But we, we're not trying to make this about fines, we're trying to make this about cleaning up our community. And so sometimes if a person's got two or three cars, I mean, that may be one weekend, you know, they can get those out of the way. If somebody's got years of junk piled up or garbage piled up, it may take them four or five, six weeks or so to haul that stuff off.
Okay.
So, so we try to give discretion and on a case-by-case basis and allow the code officer to make those determinations on the phone.
Okay, so there's some leeway there a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Uh, one other thing I want to bring up tonight. Yes, and this is my own personal copy, so I don't know what page, but it's under that section twelve dash five six. Complaint in REM in magistrate court, procedure, lane, appeal. Would you please explain what that is? Because the only REM I'm aware of is considered ionization, radiation, you know?
Yes, sir, go. I'll be glad to. A complaint in REM is a complaint not against an individual, but a complaint against a piece of property. It's a really unusual concept for people who haven't been to law school to understand, but instead of, of bringing a complaint against a person, a complaint is brought against a piece of property as though it were the property itself that were not. a piece of property as though it were the property itself that were not in compliance with a code of ordinances. And what a complaint in REM in this context allows the county to do is actually have some kind of ownership interest in the property that will allow them to enforce the ordinance. You would file what's called a lispendance in the chain of title with the clerk of court. And anyone who is interested in buying this property while the county is out doing its procedure in order to clean the property up, if they want to buy it and they do a chain of title search, it puts them on notice that something is going on with this property that they need to do more research into. So the complaint in REM and the lispendance are the vehicle, the legal vehicles that allow the county to carry out what they are given the power to do in this ordinance.
Normally it's billed as.
Yes, yes, sir. In this case, it's billed, it's the actual, you know, demolition of the structure that's sitting on the property.
To me, that's saying it's still a complaint to the property owner.
Yes, sir, I mean, it is. It's just the complaint in REM is a specialized term that lawyers use. Yes, yes, sir.
And one other comment tonight I'd like to make is, I know of some properties as far as this document that would not be in compliance, but one of those properties is owned by a ninety-something-year-old individual. And for them to make repairs or come into compliance with this, it would be a hardship on that one. So maybe you could look at maybe some sort of grants that could help these people out.
I think we've got some good news coming.
Okay.
That you're gonna, that you're gonna like if you just watch for the next couple of weeks. Community activities that are meant to be very sensitive towards the needs of those that are in the situation you're talking about. There's very high awareness here of the effect of us as citizens coming together to determine that we're going to clean up, but at the same time, there's a high level of sensitivity and awareness to the circumstances of those that are, have the misfortune of being in a position that they can't do anything about.
Okay. Well, see, and maybe others, I've been left in the dark on that.
Well, it's just really just.
You know, we don't know, you know.
There's nothing has been brought forth.
Right, okay.
That's what we're building here.
And another example, over the last 25 months or so, we've had situations where there's been junk and garbage, sometimes where the property or homeowner is just physically not able to clean it up, or maybe they didn't create the mess, another relative did and they moved out, moved on, or maybe someone's had a stroke or medical issues or something. And so we've got some, some community partners that are volunteers, faith-based groups a lot of times, that will, will matchmake them with a property owner and say, hey, y'all have a conversation and these folks may be willing to help you clean your property up. And so there was 50 of those cases that were cleaned up by volunteers. And a couple of those bigger events was actually done by Covenant College students as community service projects, where the entire freshman incoming class spent a whole day in Walker County cleaning up property and removed a lot of tonnage of garbage to the landfill. So we are very sensitive to that, of someone's ability to get in compliance. A lot of it, we've got to have willing participants in those type cases. They've got to be willing to let someone come in and help them.
I think you're going to be encouraged with what you see in the coming years.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for meeting me very much. All right, who's next? Okay. All right, we're going to move to the second item there.
You got it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We would like to see on that cleanup group, who do we see?
Okay, just see Joe after the event.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, number two, ordinance dash zero two nineteen, amends language in chapter forty-six regarding constructions of roads, county maintenance to bring current standards in line with surrounding counties. Matt, would you like to speak to this?
I'd be happy to, and I'll also invite Carlin Bowers, our public work superintendent, if he has any additional comments he'd like to make, you're more than welcome to. But essentially, what has happened in the past is that county, the county road system, when we are receiving roads into the county road system that are not constructed in a way that are adequate to fit the general road system and that are subject to deterioration, we are running into problems. And so we've had to change the specifications of road systems that are going to be taken into the county road system. So for new development that comes into the county, we are changing the requirements so that any roads that are going to come into our system in the future are better roads, they're longer lasting, and that they have a better condition over time. Carlin is, you want to help me out?
Yeah, probably, you need to probably come up here if you're pleased.
Pretty much, we've got about a handful of neighborhoods that are currently not on the county road register, and these subdivisions and neighborhoods are requesting us to take over those roads. The way they were built were fine in that time, but they were, you know, vehicles are heavier, garbage trucks, gold buses, and so forth are deteriorating, they're pretty bad. And now HOAs, developers, they're wanting us to take these neighborhoods over, and as soon as we do, we're going to have to go right in and start doing work. This change is for newer developments to where the, your sub base and just the construction of the roads are a whole lot heavier, built for this track. And then that way further down the road, whenever we do take them over, it's just take them over and we don't have to do a whole lot to them. They're pretty much in good shape if and when that ever comes about. So that's pretty much.
Yeah, what we're running into, if a road is built to the newer specifications we're seeing other communities use, that road in a subdivision ought to last 25 or 30 years before you'd have to do anything probably much to it at all. But we're seeing some more recent developments, say within 10 years or less, that you go and look at them, you go, this has got a problem, we've got mud already coming to the surface, we've got potholes, we've got these things. And so if the county takes those roads over, then it puts a burden back onto the county where if we'd have had a better suited specification for today's vehicles, that could have all been prevented. And a lot of times that couple of inches of base of gravel or, you know, field dirt or compaction, all these different things have a barrier to be able to hold that load. And so we looked at some of our surrounding neighbors and found out that our specification was substandard from where some of our other counties were, and then we're looking and saying, well, that's probably why we've got some of these problems with roads that are subdivision roads, so they're not highly traveled, but they're less than 10 years old, but they're cracking up, they're falling apart.
It really makes a lot of sense to do this now. If you think about it, people building subdivisions, that's outstanding initiative to undertake, but that's private money doing that. And what we don't want is to later shift the burden to all of us that pay taxes to have, effectively have invested on the front end of that. If we wanted to invest in it, we as private citizens would go and invest, right? You don't want it to later come back to you in the sense of a back-ended paying for that initial savings of investment on the front end.
And again, this would be for new construction, new development, new roads being cut going forward. Anyone have any comments on this?
In other words, when a developer is going to develop a subdivision or anything that's got a road on it, he would have, he would know the rule that he's got to.
The specifications.
The specifications of the road.
Up front, up front. He would know before he ever started.
It's a good idea.
All right, thank you, Carl. Anyone else have any other comments on this? Again, we're not taking any action on this. We have to have a minimum of two public hearings, we have to advertise this in the paper, and in the package, you'll see where the advertising notices have gone out into the legal organ. So anybody else on this particular topic? Okay. All right, well, that ends our first public, or both of our two public sessions, and so we now will move into our regular scheduled meeting. And first item on our agenda is our proclamation designating March 2019 as multiple myeloma, I can't say that right.
Myeloma?
Myeloma. Awareness Month. So we have with us this evening Sheriff Steve Wilson, who is a survivor of this disease. And Steve, you got anybody else?
No, she got back into Towne Lake and called me and said she could not make it. So she regrets, Linda Hugle, regrets not being able to be here.
We've done this the two prior years to bring awareness to this. At this time, I'll ask Matt, our attorney, if he'll read this proclamation, and we're going to ask our sheriff to speak to this and maybe give a little bit of his journey with this.
By the sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation, multiple myeloma awareness month. Whereas multiple myeloma, the second most common blood cancer in the world, is a cancer of plasma cells in the bone marrow and can occur in multiple areas inside the body. And whereas multiple myeloma currently affects more than 100,000 people in the United States with an estimated 30,330 new cases diagnosed and 12,650 deaths from the disease in 2016, according to the National Cancer Institute. And whereas multiple myeloma is increasingly being identified in 30, 40, and 50-year-olds as the disease is more frequently diagnosed, it is also nearly twice as likely to occur among African-Americans. And whereas the cause of multiple myeloma is not known, continued investment and innovation are necessary to determine safe and effective treatment options, including new drugs and therapies now in the research phase. And whereas greater awareness of this disease among clinicians and the general public will lead to earlier diagnosis, improving outcomes and bringing comfort to patients and their families. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, sole commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, do hereby designate March as Multiple Myeloma Action Month in Walker County, and encourage all residents to participate in activities to support myeloma education and the funding of research programs to find a cure. Signed and sealed this 28th day of February in the year 2019.
Thank you. Sheriff, would you like to speak to this?
Sheriff, thank you, Commissioner, for doing this again this year. This is the, I believe about the fifth year that we've done it countywide. Linda Hugle, who is our coordinator with the Chattanooga Multiple Myeloma Survivor Support Group, has been the driving force behind this. She coordinates all of our monthly meetings and goes, she does return from San Diego in December where she was part of the ASH conference, the conference that sheds all the new research and data into blood cancer research, leukemia, multiple myeloma, Hodgkin's lymphoma, all those different blood cancer types is what ASH looks at and studies. But March is the Multiple Myeloma Awareness Month. If you're not a patient or haven't had a loved one affected by multiple myeloma, it's a cancer that you probably have never heard of. When I was diagnosed, be 10 years in October, I'd never heard of it. I know Becky's mother was a patient of multiple myeloma, and she probably had never heard of it before her mother was diagnosed with it. We are making better strides with it, there's better drugs out there. I'm thankful that I was able to go through extensive treatment back in April of 2010 with a stem cell transplant, and I have been remarkably healthy since then. Doesn't mean that it won't always raise it subtly, hit it up again, I hope I can keep it at bay, but it is, right now, it's not a cancer that is curable, similar to many other blood cancers. But with the research that's going on through the Multiple Myeloma Research Foundation and other organizations, blood cancer organizations, we're making great strides with it. So just, you can always get involved in a 5K walk, or if you're up to it, you can get in a run, or last year we even had someone doing the Ironman that was sponsoring multiple myeloma research. And this year in Chattanooga, the Ironman, there will be a booth, multiple myeloma has a booth there, the foundation to raise more awareness for it. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. Get a couple of pictures just along, get a good backdrop here, get a couple of pictures. She likes that picture I got. All right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Look forward to doing this again next year.
Exactly right. Exactly right. Is that mine?
Yes, it's already gone.
All right, thank you. I'm going to leave that. I'll go to the sheriff to talk.
All right. Yes, Sheriff, call.
I'd like to also say that my son, my oldest son, 57 years old, and he also has multiple myeloma, and he's had stem cell transfer at Danville. And when he, when they discovered it, he had cancer cells at 85 percent, and they told him that if, and within six days, he was in debt.
Wow.
And now they, after they did this transfer, he's got it down to 3 percent, which is really good and a lot better than it was. So I always like to request your prayers for myself, wanting a favor.
Thank you, Commissioner, Paul. Great story. Okay, Becky, being our clerk and being an outstanding clerk, she pointed out to me that I had missed an item on the agenda, and that was the approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. So in your package, you will find our meeting records of our minutes from our February 14, 2019 commissioners meeting, and it's in the packet and also online. So does anyone see any corrections or issues with those minutes? Hearing none, we will sign these into the record.
Sorry for that error, I was trying to get the sheriff out as quickly as possible for his other commitments. Okay, item number two was the application for conditional use variance for Bryan Johnson, requesting conditional use variance for property located at Zero North Highway 341 and South Burton Mill Road, Flintstone, Georgia, tax map zero dash zero six nine dash zero four nine. The first hearing request was denied by the planning commission meeting on February the 21st, and as I stated earlier, we're going to table this at this time.
Okay, we have, item number three is our criminal justice coordinating council supplemental grant and awards for the accountability court, sub grant number J19 dash zero eight dash zero three two. And we've asked Mrs. Gretchen Neal to come tonight, she's the coordinator for the drug accountability court, and we're going to ask her to tell a little bit about some of the exciting progress of the accountability court and what the supplemental grant will be going for. This is, and you know, if there's any match or anything, and just a little bit of an overview of how this is going to benefit the citizens in our community.
Okay. Well, thank you, Abby, first of all. We are really excited about our program, and it, we, it's a relatively new program. We started, well, we took our first participants in October, Feb. 2017. We actually We actually started trying to build everything out in July of 2017. But at this point, we have 30 participants. They, we have kind of, we basically, we'll start over, I guess, for those of you who do not know what an Accountability Court is. It is for nonviolent offenders who have felonies, who have an addiction problem. And this is an alternative to DOC. They, it's a very structured program. It's about 21 months is the minimum, but it can go up to 24 or 36 months, just depending on what their needs are. They are required to work jobs. They go to treatment. In the first phases, it's nine hours a week. They have to work 30 to 40 hours a week. So we turn them in from tax burdens to taxpayers. They have to support their children. We check in with their employer to see are they coming to work on time? You know, are they paying their child support? Are they fulfilling just obligations that they should be fulfilling? They're drug tested multiple times a week. We do have a surveillance team that will drop in at their place of employment. They just stops in at their home. They have to come and meet before the judge weekly and give a progress report, basically what they've done in treatment, what they've done. A lot of these have no pro-social activities at all, so we encourage them to get involved in community support groups and those type of things. So it's just a very structured program. It's actually probably one of the hardest things that these folks have done. In the first phases of the program, there are several of them that will have to work between their treatment and their job. Some of them are at 50 to 55 hours per week. We don't want them to have a lot of time, so they have to be accountable for all the time. Sometimes we have them just keep journals of what they're doing with their time. But that being said, it's just a very structured program, and we're very hands-on with them. We have several that have regained custody of their children. They were in defect services. Like I said, we have all but two that work full-time jobs. We have a couple that are disabled. But we do have them do some light community service work and just some things like that to give back. What the supplemental is for, we have grown really quickly. As I said, we started in, really, our first participant was October 2017, and we are up to 30. So it's a very intense program. So this is for a case manager who works very hands-on and closely with them. It is, for those of you who do not know how it's structured, it's reimbursement-based, and it's a grant-funded position through the state. So the county doesn't actually have dollars out with that. We also have, they pay fees, so they pay $25 a week. So we have user fees, grant funds. We do get some date funds from some of the counties. And then, right now, we don't really have a lot of community support funds coming into it, but that's something that we are going to be working on as we build our program out. And we can show some of the successes that we've had with it. But that's kind of a really quick overview. I would love to talk to any of you that have questions. You can come to court and just sit in and see for yourself what it's doing. But we're really excited about the program, seeing a lot of really good results from it.
So there's Drug Court every single Thursday?
Yes, yes.
And it's held in this courtroom here?
Yes.
And all participants have to come?
Well, it's, we have five phases, so it depends on what phase there are. The first Thursday of the month, all participants are here. So the first and third, we have phases one, two, and three. So this really depends, the upper phases, four and five, they do not have, they just come once a month.
So it's a pretty intense program, and so this is going to give additional funding for this program to hire that case manager. And there's not any outlay of dollars, tax dollars, from the local counties?
No, sir.
Because this program is for the judicial circuit as well? So this, all four counties, Chautauqua, Dade, Walker, and Catoosa County? And participants in the program are probably from all four counties?
The only county that we do not have any is Dade. But we have them from all counties.
Superior Court Judge Thompson is the judge for that court, and so all those participants have to come here when they're supposed to appear?
They absolutely do, yes.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Gretchen?
What's the consequence if we don't comply with the rules of the court?
Termination, and their original sentence could be enforced.
They go to the spirit court first, they go to drug court?
Pardon?
They have to go to the superior court to get to drug court?
Yes. The referrals come from, primarily, right now, our referrals come from the public defender's office. The sheriffs have made referrals, so that's where a lot of them come from. Actually, we even go from the DA's office.
Very good. So we'll sign to approve this to receive these funds in to keep this program going?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, those were the only action items that we had. And Judge Thompson, did you have anything today or not?
I was going to speak about the changes.
Yes, why don't you come next? This is our magistrate Judge Thompson, and she's asked to come speak about some needs for her department that are upcoming that is going to help move us forward.
Hopefully. We knew that the computer-based program that we were using from the administrative office of the court was going through an update. We knew it was going to change. We didn't know exactly when, so we got notice, first of the year, it's here. Now, they are developing a new program. The one that we've used for 15-plus years was free. The new one is not free. And we, the chairman of our technology committee worked on the development of this, and the pilot court was in Floyd County. She's not implementing this program in her own court, and Floyd County does not like the program. So basically, effective September the 1st, we have no support system unless we get out and get it ourselves. They sent us a copy of some vendors that we could contact, because you're on your own to get your support system. We've looked, actually, we called all the counties that are surrounding us. Then we put it out on the Georgia Clerk's website, saying, what are you currently using or what are you going to go to? Because the people that use this system, September 1st, are going to have no backup. So the best thing that we came up with was CJT. A lot of the courts already use it. The sheriff actually uses it in the traffic part of the information that he puts in. The probate judge here uses it. Everybody that made a reply to us was just, couldn't say nothing about CJT, about their backup, their support. If they can't fix it when you call, they're in your office the next day. So we think this is the best program. Now, the new program that the state is putting out, the first year will be free because of a state bond. After that, it goes to $1,750 per computer per year. So upfront, $10,500, and it'll be the same thing the next year. CJT is a one-time charge of $15,000. That includes free training, all the maintenance, everything. Then it would be a $250 support monthly. You don't have to pay anything until they actually put it in. But all the other counties are out scrambling, trying to get on. And we would like to go with CJT. Here's another little setback, because everybody's trying to get on. And I haven't been approved. Hopefully, that will happen. But you have to get in line. And right now, if I could sign the contract today, it's still going to be the first of the year before they can put us online. So from September until we can get put on, we're basically on our own. If we crash, they did say, if worse comes to worse, if you're going to sign up with us and something happens, they could come in and put us on a temporary system, trying to get us in line. But it will be after the first of the year. This is the company we would like to use, but it would be after the first of the year before we could do that. But I need to be able to sign the contract, because I'm in a waiting line, and I may be 2:05, but if 300 signs their contract first, that moves them up and bucks us back. So it would be longer. So that's basically what I'm here for, to express that need. Any questions about anything?
Yeah, this, something is very critical to their operation. As she indicated before, the old system was being funded by the state, so it wasn't coming out of her budget for her court. And so this is a pretty significant budget hit to her operation. And so since the commission office of the governing authority for the budgets we work in, you know, in concert with our other elected officials to make sure they have the adequate materials and equipment and things that they need. So Judge Thompson, who met with us the other day, explained this to us. But in our efforts of transparency of anything that's a major change, or especially anything that's a capital purchase and expenditures over $15,000, we always like to come and explain this publicly, let people know what's going on, and allow them to, you know, answer any questions anyone from the public may have. And just, you know, make sure we're covering all of our bases and being open and transparent as we possibly can.
And this is a web-based, which is, we're not on that now. It's so much better, and it has a lot of capabilities that we don't have now. Of course, the sheriff's gone, but we do 99% of all the warrants that are issued in this county. There's a part in this system where, if we get everything worked out, where the officer doesn't have to call us for us to meet them at our office or come to our house, which they do lots of times, it can be done web-based. It'll store the signatures and, a lot of y'all may not even know what we do, but we do civil suits. Does all the program managing for that, what's taken in, when it's paid out. They'll beat you out a list of this is the check you need to write today. And when we get into the criminal end of it, all this is reported through to the GBI, NCIC, NCIC, which is the national and the Georgia-based, and we keep all those records. Now, the sheriff's office, this has been a year or so ago, had a crash in their computer system. And I'm pretty ADD about everything, but we had all those files, we had copies of all their reports, and they had to come to our office to get copies of their reports so they could get the trials when it went for prosecution. So.
How many, how many computers are you going to have to put this on?
We have six. So that would be 2,000.
Put it on all six of them?
Yes.
It's a web-based application.
It's a web-based.
Now, the other thing is, how old are your computers now?
How, I'm just saying, maybe, do you remember Greg?
I don't remember.
Three years, four years?
Probably at least four years. So you're probably going to have to replace them?
Well, I don't think that that's going to be an issue.
But you need to check that, it may be a concern.
Well.
But computers are cheap now?
They are, but they came in and looked, and it appears that we're going to be fine with that. That is just a, just really outstanding program.
It's a nightmare. With the CJT program, on the $250 on that program, is it?
It's maintenance per month.
Is that per workstation or total?
No, total.
Just total? Okay. So there's a $15,000, because one thing they're going to be able to do for you, Mitch, just the other day, is you're going to be able to convert all of your data.
Yes.
And drill system, which is huge.
Absolutely.
So the $15,000 is to get started in the training and all the data conversion. So they'll be here working hands-on for.
And they're doing free training with everything, and they'll be in our office about two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you, Judge Thompson.
Very good, thank you.
Any inquiries about anything?
All right, very good, thank you. All right, that officially ends our regular business session. At this time, we will open up the floor to any public discussion or comment. And we just ask you also to come back to the podium and state your name so everybody can hear you. So I know we've got one that was wanting to talk to us tonight about Walker County Transportation. You want to go first?
Sure.
Come on up, please.
Thank you.
Sure, appreciate you being here.
Hi, everybody, my name is Lori Allen. I am a Walker County school bus driver. How many of you, if you rode the school bus, remember your bus driver's name? How many of you remember your favorite school teacher's name? Just about say. Anyway, the reason I ask you that is most people I talk to say that they can't remember any of their teachers' names, but they can remember their bus drivers' names. And I remember my bus driver's name from when I was a kid. The first one was Joe Gregwire. He owned his own bus. He was a farmer, and this was out in rural Minnesota. And we had about a 10-mile bus ride to school. And then, when he retired, Mrs. Lauer took over, and yes, she wore her lipstick and dolled up to drive the bus. I don't normally do that, but she did. The reason I'm here with you today is that we have shortage drivers for Walker County. Now, I didn't become a bus driver years and years ago. I played music for a living for 25 years, did a variety of other things. But when the Affordable Care Act kicked in, it, you know, blew my insurance premiums out of the ballpark, and I thought, I'm not doing that. But I got thinking about the school system, and I saw a sign that said something about driving a bus, and I thought, you know, I'm going to try that. Of course, my kids said, Mom, you don't even like kids. I said, I do so. I like small groups of kids for short periods of time. But I did get my CDLs. You have to have your CDLs to be a bus driver. And once, you know, I said I'd never planned on doing this. This wasn't something I planned on doing from the time I was a kid. But what I have discovered since I've become a bus driver, and I've been one for about six years now, is that we are really public servants. We are trained. We have safety training every year, every year, mandatory safety training. We have to go to local and state. We are trained in first aid. We're trained in stopping heavy bleeding and applying tourniquets. We know what to do with kids that are having asthma attacks and have, you know, medical emergencies on the bus. We are mandated reporters, and I don't know if everybody knows what that is. But we are those that see these kids every day. In fact, there's some kids on my bus that see me more than they see their own parents. That's a sad situation, but it's true. So anyway, we know if these kids are being abused, or they're being neglected, and being mandated reporters re-report that to our supervisor, and in turn, that's reported to the authorities that need to be, you know, made abreast of that. So of course, we do have our CDLs. The Walker County, you know, Transportation Department assists you in learning everything you need to do to, you know, pass your CDLs. They assist with some of the cost of doing that. So it doesn't cost a lot to be a school bus driver. I spend a little more money because I want to get my eyes checked, make sure I can see further than 20 feet down the road ahead of me. But, you know, anyway, you know, it's just getting a background check. To be a school bus driver for Walker County, you have to be at least 25 years old. You cannot have a felony on your record. You have to have a clean driving record. And of course, we're very, very, very safe drivers. We could, if we got a moving violation in our own vehicle, in our own vehicle, lose our job. So it's basically a part-time job with full-time benefits. We have full benefits, just like the teachers do, once you have a route. You know, you can come on, everybody starts as a sub. If you're offered a route and you take a route, you're considered full-time, even though some of those routes are only five hours a day, some are seven hours a day. Special needs routes can be eight hours a day. If you wanted a full-time job, you can do other things. You can take an additional class to be certified as a substitute teacher. Basically, park the bus, go set in as a substitute teacher, get back in the bus and run your kids home, and you've got a full day. There are other things that can be done in the Transportation Department if you want to take that on, or you could even go ahead and take some of the field trips. Now, I don't do that right now, because I'm also a full-time student. I'm getting a marketing degree. So, you know, I've got a full schedule. But I kind of took it upon myself and the department to say, we're shorthanded, we've got open routes, we need. got open routes, we need some sub-drivers." And sub-drivers, you know, you're not nailed down to having to drive a bus every day. You can do as much or little as you like. But what I have really discovered is that knowing all that we're educated with now to take care of, you know, your most precious cargo, your children, and it is the safest way for them to get to school. I have determined that we are public service, and this is a very important job. And we need good people. A lot of our drivers are retired from other positions. We have retired police officers. We've got clergymen. That church, have small churches that can't afford the insurance, and so this way they can get that great insurance. And to give you an idea of just how good it is, I've got medical with less than $1,000 deductible, long-term, short-term vision, long, short-term...
Disability.
Disability, thank you. And the vision and the dental and life insurance, and out of my pocket, I pay $200 a month. You can't beat that. And if you stay on for 10 years, you also have retirement. In the last five years, I think I've had just $10 a month taken out of my check, we put into the retirement, and already in five years, there's $2,000 there. Now, if you can do your math, you know, I didn't put anywhere near $2,000 in there. I put in about $600. So in a short time, you can have decent retirement. Anyway, I want to thank you for letting me share all that. I did bring some pamphlets. Now, I'm not twisting your arm, I'm not trying to get our commissioner to be a bus driver, and I'm not trying to do that to any of y'all. But what I am asking is if you will share these with anybody you know that can possibly be a school bus driver, a decent public servant, and make the difference in the life of the child.
It's very informative and very much appreciated.
Thank you.
And very important.
And the other thing I ask is if any of you have any opportunities for me to come and share the opportunity of being a bus driver, whether it be for senior adults at churches or any other group, I would like to come and visit with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And please get some of these for me before you go.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to speak on tonight? Yes, sir? Please come up.
Yeah, actually, I've got a concern, and I'd like to introduce myself to you.
Sure.
My name is Jeff Martin. I'm a co-owner, my wife and I own, probably your, well, we're the only caving, climbing, rescue business in the state of Georgia, Intermountain Outfitters, and we reside in your county. We were approached last year about Walker Rocks and wanting to be a part of it, and we're really excited. I mean, our company is large, we're international, we bring people to the county quite a bit from around the country and from other countries. Because if you guys don't know it, you live in a community that is riddled with holes around, and whether you know it or not, people from all around the world know exactly where you are. It's called Tag for a Reason. It's Tennessee, Alabama, Georgia, and you're probably the most premier area there is. I know in the United States, concentrated caves in this region, I know of between the three states, we have over 14,000 of them mapped and plotted in three states. So, and that's wild caves with no handrails. My concern is, I moved to the county, I bought my property about five years ago to move the business here. I've been a resident now for just over two years, but maybe closer to three. My business is off of Shorty Shelton Road, which is off of Halls Valley at the southeast end of the county, and my road is a disaster. And for the life of me, I cannot get anybody to show any real concern, short of calling in the back, who is a wonderful man, gave me a cellphone number and listens to me bitch at least once a month, because I called him just to say that. I'm calling to complain about this road. I realize the road is dead ends. It dead ends in the national forest, that's why we bought there. I do realize that it went from two houses now to seven houses, would be eight or nine before we're over with, you know, everybody's getting their house built. But my business alone is suffering. I mean, I get UPS daily, twice a day, I get the postal, of course. I get customers on a regular basis, and it's embarrassing to tell people to come to my business and literally have their car shaken apart going up and down my road. The hill on it is so bad that for me to pull a 9,000-pound trailer with my one-ton pickup truck, it has to be in four-wheel drive to climb the hill. And that is a county road, and I just find that absurd. And the grade is too steep, it gets washed out in this heavy rain, it's already pushed over the culvert again, didn't do any damage this time, but with all this heavy rain, the water crossed over the top of the road, and I can't get on your guys' radar. I'd just like to be on your radar. I mean, I'm told I am, but again, I've also been, my brother came to the planning meeting two weeks ago and was told that we were not part of the 10 roads for 2019, that we just, that was part of it, county doesn't have the money, we can't fix it. So when I bought that property five years ago, that road was paved. Wasn't the best paving in the world, but it was not gravel, and I could get up and down that hill pretty easy. You guys allowed permits for chicken houses to be put out there, and they hit granite, or they hit limestone, of course, and couldn't do it and sold the property awful. In the meantime, between loggers and all the big tanker trucks that came up and down that road, they beat that road to death. You guys didn't hold a bond on it, you have no money to go back after these companies and chase that money to fix that road, and here we are, I'm paying the price for it. So I don't know what to do. I don't know how to fight this battle, and I don't know who to approach, and I've been nice and quiet and minding my own business, just trying to get something done, asking nicely. So I stand in front of you guys, pleading my case, that you are definitely affecting my business as a whole. And again, with Walker Rocks, it's a great initiative. We have the opportunity to share your county with a lot of people worldwide, and I just, I'm embarrassed to invite them to my place. And your own rescue squad trains at least once a year in my facility. So I'm servicing the county. I don't charge you guys, let them, the caving cliff team come practice and use my facility, which is insured and we're insured to train and everything. So I've been up here for 30 years probably. I mean, driving from Atlanta to here as a caver before we bought the business. So I know this county far better and I knew where I lived. I know the backroads, I know the people, I love them. I moved here for a reason. They have just pure passion of wanting to be here. So I'm just disappointed and disheartened in the way I've been treated over the past couple of years with this road.
Jeff, I'd like to say to you first of all, thanks for the business and for the Walker Rocks aspect of what you're doing. We are famous, but nobody knows it, but they're beginning to understand now.
You'd be surprised.
People are coming from all over the world. On the Walker Rocks platform, we have 45...
You guys need to free drop these.
Yes. On the Walker Rocks platform, right now, we have 45 different countries engaged with us on the Walker Rocks Facebook page alone, just in support of what Jeff's saying. And on the road part, it is on the radar, and we're all sharing without question, and it's not just Shorty Shelton. It is numerous roads throughout this county. And we do care, Jeff. We really do care. This process, we are getting the revenues in, and I'm sure the commissioner will want to add to this. The revenues are coming, but it has to be prioritized. It's the sad reality of where we are right now, and we're not borrowing money to build roads. We've made that determination, we're not going to pay interest debt, we're not going to create debt through interest payments in the county anymore. We just can't, we just can't do it.
And I appreciate that. As a businessman, I appreciate that 100%. Carrying debt and interest is detrimental to all of us. But again, I have seen the list of roads you guys have alleged and fixed for the past three years, and I really think that there was choices made, and, you know, I think they could have, several of those roads could have gone either way, but were a priority. And again, I know I'm a dead-end road, again, that's why I bought there, but it's becoming an issue just simply because it's destroying vehicles. I mean, it's costing me money to live in your county now. And the fact that the third, the second year I lived here, you increased my taxes by 300% probably. So that hurt, that was a hard shot. And then again, to be told that hurry up and wait, we'll get to you when we can, that's a tough deal to swallow.
But it is, and we appreciate you having your business in Walker County and bringing more attention to the natural beauty and the Walker Rocks. It's been a grueling task because in the past, administration neglected a lot of our road system and wasted money in other areas that should have been put into the infrastructure and what government should be doing. And in the course of that, run up a lot of debt that we're still trying to work through. Fortunately, the citizens as a whole voted to pass the T-Splash back in November of 2017, which is the thing that has really saved us any at all. If we hadn't had that, we would have really, really be upside down and not any real good options. This team's been here now two years, and so we got that on the ballot in November of 2017. It was passed, but those collections couldn't start until April of 2018. So we're not even a year into this yet, but we had the state of Georgia tell us that the second most dangerous county road in Georgia was in Walker County. And that was going up Lookout Mountain, up Nika Jack Road.
I know the road.
And, you know, we had state patrol telling us when it would start misting rain, they would just send an officer that way. And so what we've had to focus on is the commuter roads and the most dangerous roads and the roads where there's the highest volume of traffic to affect the greater good the fastest. And so in order to make sure we were effectively doing this, we got an engineering company to do an assessment on every road in Walker County and to use the grading system that the state uses and also to help us look and make sure we're making those right decisions. Because back in the prior administration, a lot of times, as you indicated, road decisions were made that you kind of scratch your head and say, "Why is that road being paved?"
Politics.
Which shows you there was politics in those decisions, and we didn't want to, we didn't want to be associated with those type of decisions, so we got the professional documentation so we can validate what we're doing. So at this time, all of the secondary roads, dead-end roads, we're just having to maintain those the best that we can until we get these first roads done. In the recent past, prior administration was probably doing an average of about five to seven miles of road per year, centerline miles of road. When you've got almost 700 miles of road of county road, just county miles alone, you're approaching 700 miles, we still have about 20 miles that's classified with the DOT as undeveloped roads that are basically 100, that have never been paved of any type. It's also sad that they allowed logging and construction and heavy trucks to go in there and basically destroy that road. But I think as y'all heard earlier, this is a good example where a road is not built to a proper specification and heavy traffic just destroys it. And that's where we were talking about changing our ordinance to beef up that specification so we don't repeat this, where a road, five years ago, you said, you know, was fine for a secondary road, and now it's destroyed, you've got to be in four-wheel drive if you're going uphill. And so it's a tragedy of our county, but there is movement because the list of roads that we just Tuesday released for our bidding process, there's a state website that we submit that to, and we also advertise it in the local papers, so all potential bidders will see this information. I believe it was just a little bit over 22 miles of road that we're doing in this second phase. So we did Nika Jack Road and another road that was real bad on the north end of Lafayette. But for 22 miles of road to be paved in Walker County in one year hasn't happened in a long time, and we wouldn't, again, not be able to do it without the T-Splash. The T-Splash is coming in about $300,000 per month, which if a road is ready to pave and you've got a good base, that's going to pave about two miles of road a month. And so as you see, we're not, we've not collected quite a full year, we're already putting out a road list to cover 22 miles of road. And so we're spending money into patching and gravel and hot mix and cold mix and different things, trying to shore up as much as we can.
I can respect all that. Can you tell me that my road will get paved one day?
Yeah, it definitely will. I just can't give you a time schedule at this point. Once we get into this second phase and we see what some of these roads are going to cost us to pave, because one of the, probably one of the worst commuter roads in our county that I've seen is over the Western Mercy Valley is South Dix Creek Road, and it's about, I think about seven miles. Just the amount of base work and all that's going to have to be done, the engineers are telling me that one road's probably going to be over a million dollars.
I'm sure mine's not going to be cheap. It's only about a mile and a half, but...
Because it's going to be rebuilt.
It's going to have to be rebuilt.
It's going to have to be rebuilt south of Mill, too.
So, but again...
It's a tar and fett road to start with.
And again, it's just from my company standpoint, I wouldn't be doing myself justice if I didn't stand up here and say something.
Absolutely. Well, you know, we shared your frustration, we understand, it's not being ignored, and we'll do the best we can to maintain it and the interim.
I do appreciate that.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else tonight? All right, great meeting, a lot of good conversation, a lot of good things happening in Walker County. Thank you for being here. We'll be back here in two weeks at 6 o'clock, so I hope you can join us, and everyone have a safe journey home tonight.
Thank you.